City Council Meeting of November 21st, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ames.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Currielli.
Here.
Alderman Messina. Alderman Sismarski. Alderman Hartwoods.
Here.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. I declare a quorum. Please stand and join pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the minutes of November 7th, 2024?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any comments, questions, or corrections?
I do have a correction.
All the women names.
On packet page 13 in the adjournment section, my name is misspelled.
Packet page 13.
And the adjournment section.
Aren't you the regular, regular council?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
City manager get a new keyboard down there?
That's just saying if you're there. It's a little test.
All right, got that one. No other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Under written communiquees. I will start with, does any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? I do have one written communiquee. Dear Mayor and City Council, I hope this message finds you well. My name is Theodore Panagiotaros, and together with my brother Pete, we are the new owners of Bentley's. Having purchased the establishment on August 13th, 2024, our family has been actively involved in hospitality industry since 1960, and throughout this time, we have developed a strong sense of responsibility, dedication, and attention to detail, values that have contributed to our success in the field. As we move forward with our ownership of Bentley's, we are seeking to apply for a liquor license to complement our business operations. Additionally, we are considering expanding our offerings to include dinner service featuring a variety of Italian and Greek dishes. We are excited to become an active part of Wooddale community and are committed to maintaining high standards of service and hospitality that Bentley's has long been known for. We look forward to working closely with the City Council and ensure our continued success. And thank you for taking the time to review this letter, so I would just ask staff if, what kind of liquor license? Is it just beer and wine? So Jeff, I don't know, maybe Wilver. And you'll, this way we know.
What are they applying for?
Liquor license.
I gathered that part. What type of license?
That's why.
I assumed that was the question.
No, well, she's, Stacy's not gonna know it. Came from Wilver. Wilver got the letter. So before they, it's gonna come to the next meeting, next week, and we'll get the answers. This way, we know it's what. All right? Okay. Nothing under my report. City manager, Mr. Murmas, do you have anything?
Two quick items. Just a reminder, we have the tree lighting at City Hall that will take place on December 7th. The event begins at 2:00 PM, and we will close the event with fireworks at 5:00 PM. And then we have final brush collection will be the week of December 2nd, and the final yard waste collection will be the week of December 9th.
All right, thank you. Do we make a note that Alderman Sismarski is here? Okay. All right, next. Under consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the executive session minutes from June 20th, 2024.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Roll call.
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next, the omnibus vote. If no objections, we have three items. Any objections? There being none, any to motion? Second.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay, on a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, need a motion to approve the items. Item number one, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wooddale and allied, alliance, allied for the City Hall HVAC improvements project in amount not to exceed $95,223. Item number two, a resolution approving a professional service agreement between the City of Wooddale and HR Green for the right-of-way coordination and acquisition services related to the Elizabeth Drive Multi-Use Path Project in amount not to exceed $23,440. Item number three, inordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 18 Administrative adjudication of the Municipal Code of the City of Wooddale, Illinois, 1993. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion to second. Roll call.
Alderman Ames.
Yes.
Alderman Currielli.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina, I mean, Sismarski.
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods.
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next, committee chair reports planning and zoning. Alderman Catalano.
I have one, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yes, a resolution approving an agreement for consultant services with HR Green for the purpose of the city building code review and updates. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Questions? Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Thank you. Couple. I won't argue the code part, but I will, I have issue with, so HR Green is our inspection department, right? We don't have any, we have a plumbing inspector. So, right there. So, I would prefer to see somebody else go through this and be objective. It's kind of self-serving to have them go through it and do it. They're not gonna come up with anything that was against what they, they wanna do. I mean, why can't we go with Safebuilt? They, who's gonna, well, let me back up. So who's gonna write the ordinances? Because that seems the difference between HR Green and Safebuilt was that Safebuilt said they're gonna do more work. They talked about writing the ordinance, working with the attorney, doing those, those, obviously, that's more work. That's justifying the cost. So who would be doing that?
Ms. Springer?
HR Green. So, I did clarify with HR Green that exact question. So, what we're looking for is for them to actually blackline the codes that we have existing now, showing what changes are proposed, and then in detail, put together what's changed between the last code and the current code. And then the council would be able to go through those items and determine individually if you wanted to add those or keep those. But the resolution and ordinance, the way we prepare them here is that there's usually a cover that is prepared by our attorney's office and then attachment showing all the black lines. So I did confirm with HR Green that they will be preparing all the black line attachments for the ordinances, and our legal team would prepare the cover ordinance adopting the attachment.
Right, so that was.
But essentially, each company is doing the same thing, because you're saying that that's what we asked them to do, the black line, right, 2012 versus 21. And then we're gonna hand that to the attorney and staff, and you guys are gonna do the rest of the magic, so. And those phone calls, could we call Safebuilt and go, you're not doing the other part? How much less is it?
Sure.
Go ahead, Ms. Springer.
I just, it's, and not to pick on anybody, but it's like, I wouldn't call Brad to audit Brad.
Right, Ms. Springer, go ahead.
I certainly could talk to Safebuilt and see if there's some room and adjustment in their price and explain the difference between, they wouldn't have to actually prepare the ordinances, they would just prepare the attachments, and see if, you know, that makes a difference. I would say, though, that one of the reasons, at least I believe, that HR Green is better suited is because amendments, and by the way, we have about 15 pages of local amendments in our codes. And so, a lot of those get added over time by prior staff or prior councils, and some of those local amendments might not be necessary or appropriate, you know, 12 years after the last time we've done an update. So, that's one of the reasons we might wanna consider updating right now, but the, the, okay, now I've lost my train of thought, because I went off target.
I saw you drifted, I'm like, you, you, you did a left hook.
Um, so, the HR Green is in our codes and in our local amendments every day. And so, they're most familiar with what they are, and they've, they didn't adopt them. They didn't, I don't know if they recommended them to us or not, but they're just enforcing what we've adopted in our codes. And so, with the 14 pages of amendments, they've actually been applying them in the field and seeing where there's been issues that have come up, either during plan reviews or in the field. And actually, our inspector, plan reviewer, has talked to me about a couple of items, saying, hey, this is a problem. I'm not sure why it was originally adopted, but it doesn't seem to make any sense anymore, and really isn't necessary for the community, and it caused these three people issues as we were going through the permit process. So that's why I think they're better equipped to help us.
My concern, and I know I called you, so, these guys are gonna go through the books, right? It's the international code books, correct?
Correct.
And there's a lot of stuff in there, and I asked, are we gonna see the differences between one and the other? Because the last time we did this, they had sprinkler systems for brand-new houses or whatever, we took that out, a few other things. I remember, it wasn't a 20-minute discussion, it was, it took some time. That's what I wanna see. I wanna make sure, what are the differences regardless? Either, either company's gonna give us that. That's what I wanna see, right? Okay.
Correct. So, one of the expectations that I've set out is, if we're going from the 2012 to, let's say, the 2021, there's been a number of code updates in between then. So they basically get released every three years, so 2012, 2015, 2018, and 2021. So, my request of them has been, okay, you need to go through the 20, what changed in the 2015 code from the 2012? What are the major issues? So that we, as a community, can determine whether or not we wanna incorporate all those things. If we say, no, we don't think that's a good idea, then we can amend things out or change them. And so, they would do that for 2012 to 2015, the changes from 2015 to 2018. So there'd be a list of each of those items for each of the code changes.
So, hold on. So, if we're going from 20 to 12, if he's gonna, whoever, they're gonna give us the changes, it doesn't matter if it was 15 or 18, whatever's changed. So if there was something added in 15 and 18, and it's still in 21, that, that change is gonna show. I mean, why do they need to look at 15 and 18? I'm just curious, because I wanna know the changes from one to the other. If it was done in 15, and it's still there in 18, it's gonna be there in 21, that's a change.
That would simplify matters. Sometimes, it's good, it's helpful to see when something was added and why it was added, and if it's changed over time. But I can just have them give a complete list of everything that's changed between 2012 and 2021.
And if something's taken out, then I would, I would imagine we'll see that as well, correct? Alderman Woods, did you have something else to say?
Yeah, I never had a clue that we were gonna try to compare all, all those.
Oh, right, that doesn't make sense to me.
So, so going back to the other company, though, didn't the other company do inspections for us? I mean, they analyze code, so I don't, I don't see, well, they might be current on the code. I don't see that the other company is, isn't able to do the job just because they haven't done the last 100 inspections or, I guess is my case. And so, if we're looking at money, too, I mean, we bypassed a $7,000 contractor for a $15,000 contractor. I'm sure there were some reasons, but we're not looking at this just for the dollars. I hope we're not arguing, this is a big move, over $3,000 or $4,000 on getting this done. And I would just rather have a fresh set of eyes looking at it, as opposed to HR Green, nothing against HR Green and what, and what they do.
Ms. Springer?
And let me, let me just ask another question, too. So, when you say we're gonna blackline everything through that codebook, is, I mean, a lot of those are just verbiage changes and word changes and definition changes. So, that's gonna be a lengthy process. I thought it was gonna be a higher-level thing to look at, what are the major changes? But, you know, I'm okay going line by line, word by word.
Ms. Springer?
So, we would be looking at all the previously adopted amendments. And so, I would expect whoever we hire to go through all of those and say, these are still good things to have in the code. These things you might wanna think about changing. And then a justification as to why. And to answer your other question, either firm could do it. The, the person who would do it for HR Green is the person who's currently doing our building plan review and building inspections. The person who would do it for Safebuilt is a person who really just focuses on updating codes for other communities.
Any other, Alderman Ames?
So, in your analysis of this topic, it actually says in here that Safebuilt, when they were consulting and plan reviewing, they, the city was not satisfied with the performance of their team. So that, to me, says a lot, that obviously, we had issues with them. So, can you speak to that? Like, why would we even wanna consider them if they're not somebody that we've had a good experience with?
Ms. Springer?
So, the issue was with one or two individuals that were performing the inspections. This is an entirely different team that updates the codes, who we do have confidence in. We have talked, as I have talked to him, and he's very experienced in doing these types of code updates. And there's probably, I think they gave me a list of about a dozen that they've performed in Illinois.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Alderman Hardy Woods.
Wasn't, was there a presentation we were supposed to see last Thursday? I missed that part, if we.
We don't have to go through it, but we can, if you'd like.
Is there anything that we're not already discussing that's important in there?
I had a survey in there of what our surrounding communities are. I kind of went through that we requested, I guess, quotes from four firms, and we got three, and why I was recommending HR Green. And the, the background checks on all three firms, the references that we did check, they were all very good. And so, there was a recommendation in there. And then there were a few slides. I understand that when I was unable to make it to the committee meeting, there was a question about why we should do it. So, I reached out to some building officials, you know, why, why is it a good idea to update building codes? And I had put some of those responses on the screens.
Anything further? Yeah, no, we have a motion, I'm just checking. Alderman Woods?
So I would, so based on what I said, could you give them a call? Is it a dollar thing, or is everybody? Because I would ask to have another company do the review of the code, as opposed to have the same company that we hired that's doing the work through the code. It's nice to have another set of eyes looking at it.
I have a question. So, did, I think Alderman Woods is alluding that Safebuilt is doing some extra work that everybody else is not? Is that the case?
So, the proposals that we received, they're really doing, proposing to do the same thing. They do a comparison between the codes that were and the codes that are proposed. They prepare the black lines, they go through it with you to determine, you know, what amendments you'd like or wanna eliminate, and then prepare the final documents for consideration. I can absolutely ask.
When you said, just.
Hold on. Go ahead.
I can absolutely ask if they're willing to adjust their price and clarify that they wouldn't actually be writing the ordinances themselves, but they would have to prepare the black line, which is, the way that other communities sometime do this, is they put all of the text changes within the body of the ordinance. And it says, you know, section so-and-so is amended to read as follows, and that's all put within an ordinance format. They're just gonna give us that information in a different format.
Okay. Alderman Woods, did you have follow-up? We have a motion to second. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Ames.
I just wanna make sure, are we voting for HR Green?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alderman Currielli.
No.
Alderman Sismarski.
No.
Alderman Hartwoods.
No.
Alderman Hardy Woods.
No.
Okay. That fails. Now, you're gonna go back.
I'll make a motion to reach out to Safebuilt and ask them to reduce the price based on they don't have to write the ordinance or work with the attorney, that they're gonna produce, that you're comfortable they're gonna produce the same black line. I don't want there to be a bait and switch on that either, so. And see what that price is. I'm sure it's, you know, gonna reduce what's there, and I'm comfortable with whatever that is. If that knocks off $2,000 or $3,000, that would be my motion.
Second. Okay, I have a motion. Mr. Bond?
It is for, point of order, what I, it appears though there's direction to seek all additional information from one of the, one of the bidders, so. And that could be a matter, so if you want, you could, this has already been voted on, but if you want, you can reconsider that.
No, 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 no.
And then have her bring in that information, present what you just went through with Safebuilt.
Hold on a second. When you say it's been already voted on, are we talking about last week?
No, this, this, you just voted that, and the motion failed.
Failed, right.
So you'd have to have someone on the prevailing side, just procedurally, somebody on the prevailing side vote reconsider that, and then just table that to provide, Ms. Springer, an opportunity to present the Safebuilt information, so you'll have a side-by-side comparison to address at the next.
Let me, let me ask.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
For me, the money's less important than.
Right.
The things happening. I think the price will get reduced, and I'm happy with whatever the numbers. So can we, can we approve it and go not to exceed the $20,000? Ms. Springer's gonna, Director Springer's gonna talk to them and get the price reduced. I don't know that we.
Mr. Bond?
I'm assuming we wanna move forward, right, and get this.
Correct. Mr. Bond?
You could, but you've gotta, if, if you're dealing with either company, you've got, you've already taken action on the resolution that's approving the agreement for consulting service, which failed. So if you want that to be reconsidered as a motion to not exceed this dollar amount, you could do that. And then that would be, the matter would be approved, subject to that dollar amount, whichever company it would be.
All right. In an effort not to waste time, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Safebuilt in a not-to-exceed amount of $20,000.
Second. Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, well, you don't have that on the agenda, so that's why I was saying, if you reconsidered the one you have on your agenda.
Oh, because it's not on the agenda, got it.
So it wouldn't be filing.
Well, the reason.
I'm looking at the old one going, I don't know what the problem is there.
The, the reason it's on the agenda is because I figured it's gonna take time, and I know we got a lot of big meetings coming up, so I wanted to have this discussion and keep moving. So, what's the correct thing here?
So procedurally, what I would recommend is someone on the prevailing side who voted negative to deny the, not approve the resolution for HR Green, to ask that that be reconsidered, have a second vote on that, that puts it back on the table. And then you can add the additional conditions on there and including.
So to, to go back, basically to go back and see if they understood what they were supposed to do in the first place.
And that could come back with the Safebuilt information as well at that time.
So make a motion to bring HR Green back.
It'll be a motion to reconsider the resolution approving an agreement for consulting services with HR Green for the purposes of the city's building code review and update.
And it would just, it would just come back the next week's meeting then.
I'll make a motion to reconsider in ordinance repeal, or, wrong one. Resolution approving an agreement with consulting services for HR Green for the purposes of the city building code review and updates.
Second. Alderman Ames?
It sounds to me like, is that going out for rebid again, then?
No.
Because if they already bid on it.
No.
We already have their number, and they bid on whatever the project was. So why would you just be reaching out to one company to clarify when the bid is the bid?
Mr. Bond, go ahead.
I think the, the, I don't know what the motion's going to be, I anticipate, I know, but with, in that motion, I think that would be, to do this project at a cost not to exceed X dollars, which would then be HR Green or Safebuilt.
Well, we don't even have to put a price on it right now, because it's gonna come back to the meeting next week. She's gonna make a phone call, and it'll be at the meeting next week, then. So really, do you have to put a price on it right now?
I would say not to exceed.
Alderman Ames?
But we have prices, so I guess I'm just confused on what we're re-asking of Safebuilt or HR Green or anyone. Like, and why wouldn't we reach out to the fire safety consultants, too?
Well, because they, they were, they were the cheapest, if I remember right, correct?
They were $7,000.
But, that's really, they're more specialized, I think, if I remember asking that question. Ms. Springer?
Yes. They, they don't have as much experience in doing these. They have done them for a number of towns, but I, they don't, we don't have any familiarity with them. I wanted to respond to the, the other question as well. I believe, if Attorney Bond can correct me, we have the ability to go back and discuss, this isn't a, wasn't a formal bid. It was a request for proposals. I asked for some quotes. And so, we do have the ability to go back to one and ask them to reconsider what their proposal price would be.
So, this is professional services?
Okay.
And what was done many years ago, we just brought one up, and we kinda changed that a little bit. Now, I understand what Alderman Woods is saying. HR Green's doing our inspections.
They're essentially our building department.
Better to have somebody else outside looking at it's what, is what his intent is. We had Safebuilt doing some of our work. I can tell you, Safebuilt was the guys that checked my house out when I was remodeling. And they were inconsistent from one bathroom to the other. I could tell you, I'm like, why is this? I'd have to do it on the other one. Oh, well, the guy missed it. It's a different guy. But, I'm like, how am I gonna fix that problem? Now, I put up the walls already. So it was.
Welcome to my world.
It was.
Happens every day, every building.
Right, right, I get it, then, and there's always, so, okay, that's, I don't have a problem with that, but. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to reconsider. a problem with that, but. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to reconsider, well, not to pass it, but-
So this is-
It's, go ahead.
Then we'll simply bring it back on the table. If the motion passes, now you've got that resolution.
Just to bring it on the table, okay.
And you can add whatever-
Just making sure that we're not now passing it, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Curielli?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Okay, now it's, they're on the table. Now we need another motion. Mr. Bond?
Correct.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve SafeBilt, approve an agreement with them for consulting services for the purpose of the city building code review and update in an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
No.
Alderman Curielli?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. But, so that just passes for her to go to them. It doesn't pass, they're going to have to come back, correct? Mr. Bond?
Right. We'll have to have an agreement for you to approve that has all the terms and conditions in it for final action at a future meeting then.
Okay. That concludes your report?
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Curielli?
I'll report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Hardy Woods?
Uh, one report, Mayor.
Go ahead.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of Wooddale and H.R. Green for the Illinois Route 19 at Central Avenue Parking Lot Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $42,859. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Questions on this? Alderman Hartwoods?
I just can't wrap my head around, how much, how much is the parking lot?
Don't get me started.
$500,000?
That's crazy.
Why, why are we building the parking lot? Again, I haven't-
Oh, wait a minute.
Mr. Murmish is whispering. It also includes redoing the road or something? What's going on, Mr. Lang? Shut some light, because I'm also looking at the parking lot.
Sure. So the, the proposal for the design work also includes the southern leg of Central Avenue. During the intersection project, Central Avenue would be completed to the radius to the southern IDOT right-of-way line. And this would be the completion of the rest of Central Avenue south of that line, as well as the parking lot.
Wait, hold on. So are we doing something to the road? We have to move the road over? Say that again, please.
So the road will be, is currently offset. It will be realigned with the northern leg of Central and widened to an appropriate width. However, when we're constructing, the intersection project is going to be the first portion of this completed, possibly next spring and summer, depending on IDOT's approval. And what they're going to do is they're going to complete the intersection of Central Avenue to the south to just the southern portion of the IDOT right-of-way line, because we don't want to be driving trucks and equipment over it, a completed roadway, as we're doing the water tower and any other improvements to the south there. So after that, the water tower would be constructed, and then after the water tower is substantially complete, they would construct the southern leg of Central Avenue to wherever that terminal is, and then the parking lot as well.
Alderman Woods?
So do we have to purchase any other property to make that road work and this-
Mr. Lang?
We do. There is some right-of-way that would be needed. I believe it starts on page 114 of your packet. Some right-of-way and some temporary easements. And they're color-coded there between the two properties.
And again, the, the-
Go ahead.
Who gets, I'm sorry. Who, who, who's the parking lot for? We're just randomly going to put it at the corner of this intersection?
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
So originally, because we do need to acquire some land from that property to the south, they would impact their parking. They would be losing about nine spaces, we figure, based on the width of the property that we need to acquire to accommodate the right-of-way. So we feel like it would be a good bargaining chip to acquire that land, that they could use these parking spaces. And then if the future goal of, you know, mixed-use development to the east of this location was ever realized, that property could be used for, that parking could be used for spill-over parking to serve that development as well.
So when you-
You have a follow-up?
Yeah. So when you say property to the, to the south, the one in the back or the one in-
In the back.
Correct. Along the metro right-of-way track. So if you, if you're on page 115 or 116 of your packet, it's, the land that we need to acquire is shaded in yellow, and the, the temporary easement that would be needed is in the orange.
Follow-up?
Yeah. Do we know how much the parking lot is, is a breakout cost?
I don't have an estimate of problem cost, no.
Any other questions?
No.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Do we already have an agreement with the property owner?
We do not.
Mr. Lang?
The appraisals are in progress right now.
I'm assuming we don't move forward on the parking lot portion without an agreement, right? There's no need to build a parking lot if we're not taking those nine spaces, right?
Mr. Lang?
The parking lot idea, I mean, it's just, again, it arose because there's a limited numbers, amount of space left on that parcel after we construct the water tower. So it can either be used for green space or parking. So given that it's, you know, the town central business district, we feel public parking is something that's at a premium there.
But something you said last week, so the height of the thing over, can't have spots underneath the cone of the, under the overhang of the, so it's not like we're asking them. We're basically telling them we need that property, right? Is that what you're telling me? Mr. Lang?
The property will need to be purchased. It's more so to do with the right-of-way of the road than the, the water tower.
Right.
But yeah, it will, has to be purchased from them.
So the road, to move the road over because, because of the tower. That's what, and that, that building back there was for sale, if I'm not mistaken. Alderman Woods?
Yeah. Just again, to the parking lot, I, I get it. But we have a parking lot at Irving and Wooddale Road that almost never gets used. So I don't envision, except for maybe that business owner then deciding it's his parking lot ever getting used. I don't know. It just, it's an expense that, I mean, we've, we've got all kinds of things to spend money on. This doesn't seem like one, but I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Mr. Murmish?
Yeah. It was under consideration when we talked about potential developments further east down the road. So we figured we're in there right now. This is possibly a good time to do this. But I know, Mr. Lang, if we just maybe carve out a couple of spots, we can always revisit this down the road. Perhaps, we don't have to do it now. But this wasn't kind of the long-term goal for that area, because we did make some changes to zoning to facilitate further development in that, in that area. That specific area, I think, is zone, I forgot the classification, but I believe that was one of the only zones that was zoned that, correct? So we don't have to do it now, but in the long term, it probably would inevitably get done. But I understand the concern about limited funds right now, so I don't, it's not a necessity now. It was just, we're in there, we're constructing. This could be a good time.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Just as I comment to that. And I would get that. If it was maybe a $50,000 thing, I would go, all right, we'll, we'll just do it. I don't know. So, thanks for that update though.
Alderwoman Ames?
Would we need parking area for access to the water tower from Public Works? Are any services being done when that water tower's in place?
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
We will need access. If the parking lot doesn't get constructed, we would just, you know, have an access gate off of Central Avenue to the south.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Catalano?
When is the water tower scheduled to be built?
Mr. Lang?
The water tower is supposed to go to bid this fall. And we anticipate that with material lead times and contractor availability, construction will begin until at least next fall and possibly the following spring.
Right. So looking at the highlighted stuff, the yellow is the road, right? Do you want to, let's see here, trying to, trying to, we got, oh, we don't have a slide, right? Uh-oh, the page, yeah.
Yeah, the yellow is the area that would be needed for right-of-way for the road. The kind of dash line through the white is the center line of the road, and then it's a 50-foot right-of-way. It's 25 foot on either side of that.
So, but we're moving the, the road over, is what you're telling me?
The road is getting realigned to the west a little bit to line up with the northern leg of Central Avenue.
So then, so the purple was the old, and the green is the new, the realigned?
The purple is, needs to be acquired as temporary easement, and the green and yellow are right-of-way. Those will be purchased.
But that's where the, and the yellow's where the 10-foot water main is?
Correct. There's existing easement there.
Right. So what do we need to purchase? Again, I, last week, I'm looking at it, I'm like, why are we spending all this money on this parking lot? I understand, maybe future we're going to need it, whatnot. And-
We got a big one we don't use now.
Right. That's, that was my big gripe last week. So what happens, what is it if it's just to realign the road and we don't take any parking spots? What's the cost from H.R. Green then?
Well, that, that's already covered as part of the, the intersection project.
As part of the first part with the water tower?
Yeah.
Oh, with the-
With the intersection.
With the intersection.
So we could potentially just take the southern leg of Central Avenue down to the alley and not get any additional. We would need a small portion of right-of-way from that southern property, just to accommodate the connection with the alley. But we wouldn't impact much of their parking in that instance. But, you know, the thought process was that if we're purchasing right-of-way, and there may be development to the east there at some point in the future, we may as well take the right-of-way all the way down to the southern property line to accommodate, you know, if there was an alley behind that, that development at any point in the future.
There, there is a, an alley back there already.
There's an alley between the two properties.
Right.
So the, the goal of the re, the rezoning was to make use of the full depth from Irving Park Road to the railway tracks to consolidate those lots and build larger developments.
Right. I don't know. I'm not a big fan of spending half a million dollars. And I get it, at some point, we might have to do it, and maybe then it'll cost us $550. It's possible. And then again, maybe it's not.
That's fine. It was presented as an option for the council, and it's completely up to you all.
I get it. I, I brought it up last week. I wasn't too happy about it. All right. So we do have a motion and a second to go forward. Let's see how the vote goes, unless we got other questions? Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
Can we amend the motion to sideline the, the parking lot?
Well, then there's no reason for us to spend this extra $42,000. This was, you just, you just said-
This is for the design of the parking lot. So if it gets voted down with the direction that, you know, maybe we bring it back at a future date, perhaps, I don't know, procedurally.
So the part up to the alley's already done with the light, with the signal. That's why I was asking last week, why are we spending, okay. We have a motion. Oh, Mr. Murmish, go ahead.
I was going to say, we could possibly just throw this idea into the unfunded section of the forthcoming CIP, because it is inevitably probably going to need to get done. So we could do that as well, if it gets voted down tonight, just to make sure it's on record somewhere.
Right. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Another question? Go ahead.
So were you saying to do that now, Mr. Murmish?
No, he says if it gets voted down.
Okay.
If it doesn't get voted down. I mean, if it gets voted down, we don't have to even put it in the unfunded. We're going to talk about CIP in two months. That's what- Right. Well, that's why I wanted to get that stuff with the building stuff, because I know it takes time. And tonight was a short meeting, so we're here a little longer. It's okay. Alderwoman Ames?
So if, if we do not move forward with this, it won't impact anything to do with the water tower being built-
Or the bridge, no, nothing.
It will not deter from that project, correct?
Correct.
Correct. I might direct H.R. Green to not work on the appraisals for the portion of the right-of-way all the way to the south, since it wouldn't be needed. But we can include that as an alternate.
It would stay as is. We're just not spending the $42,000 to finish the road and to do the parking lot, which is going to cost close to another half a million dollars. Mr. Lang, anything else, otherwise?
Nothing else, Mayor.
All right, let's do the vote.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
No.
Alderwoman Ames?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Uh, no.
Alderman Curielli?
No.
Alderman Sismarsky?
No.
Alderman Hartwoods?
No.
Okay, and that fails. And don't worry about the CIP unfunded. That'll come up. We don't want it then either. We don't have to do it. So that's another discussion for Mr. Wilson. I know he'll like that. Give him something to do.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Under Finance and Administration, Alderwoman Ames?
No report tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Under Other Business, nothing this evening. Approval of list of bills for November 20th, 2024, Alderwoman Ames?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for November 20th. It should be November 21st, right?
Today is-
Today.
Today?
The 21st, not the 20th. 2024 for $1,521,717.28.
That's your motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Uh, question probably for Brad.
Go ahead.
Uh, item 19821, Village of Itasca, the CPKC Coalition payment of $2,366. I was just wondering how often we make that payment?
Murmish.
I guess I have another question on two, but.
Go ahead, Mr. Murmish.
So Itasca is the leader of the coalition, so all the billing goes through them and all the invoicing goes through them. It's really whenever they get around to it. So I haven't noticed a set schedule, but they do send those invoices out when-
Is that a year?
Go ahead.
Uh, no, this, we would receive more than one a year. We do budget, I believe, $50,000 for that expense. So yeah, we'll get more than one a year.
Good. Follow-up?
One follow-up. So as the description for that payment, it says O'Hare Noise. Is that two different things, or?
Mr. Murmish?
That's, okay.
Brad, go ahead.
Mr. Wilson? Notice same thing with the utility billing. Can't change it.
Yeah, you're talking on the, on the far-
It's the last, second to last item.
Yeah, but you're saying on the far right, that description.
Yeah, on the description.
Yeah. So that's the, that's what that account is called in our GL. It's, it's a long story, but it was the O'Hare Noise account.
Okay.
And then we merged it with the rail, because that also involves noise when we're doing the, the quiet zone. So it kind of became the noise mitigation account, if you will. And there's just some funky things with the system renaming accounts. So it's, it was the O'Hare Noise, and then it became like O'Hare and Rail Noise. And so it's kind of, the accounts just morphed, but the, the name of the account is kind of flagged a little bit. We actually have a ticket in with Tyler right now to try to get that resolved, but, but yeah, so.
Then one last thing, probably for the city. Is that just like a lobbying expense? Or what does that money go to? I know we're-
Mr. Murmish?
Um, yeah, I mean, there's lobbying involved. There's technological consultants for the actual railway that monitor the railway. There is Strategia, which is a PR firm that we work with, a professional management firm as well. So there's a number of consultants that we pay as part of the consortium. So I can go back and pull exactly what this one's for, but there's a number of them.
Thank you.
Yeah. So as far as that O'Hare Noise and whatever, it's same thing with the billing, right? You can't change it or whatever with this program, with the question I had earlier? Okay. Anything else? Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, on page 121, I think that's for PD. Hans Associate Social Services Program for $1,185.
The crisis center, right? Chief, go ahead.
That's our contracted social services employee who we refer monthly, any families in need of social services. So that's a month-